I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the board. Bryant.
Here.
Call Dr. I will. Murphy?
Here.
Phipps?
Here.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
And Saunders?
Here.
Section three, three point one is approval of the agenda. Before I get a motion to approve, I would like to amend the agenda to remove item nine point two for tonight. Can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda? Murphy?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Um, section three point two, action items for closed session. Um, closed session minutes from March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Does anyone have any corrections? Very nice. Can I get a motion to approve? Phipps?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saunders? Yes. Three point three, student discipline for closed session. Um, can I get a motion to uphold the discipline as described on the agenda? Rediger? Straley?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Saunders? Yes. Section four, communications, four point one. We are welcoming our CACC students up to the agenda.
Hello. Is Mitchell Sennings here for Culinary Arts, February and March? Elia Stedman for Early Childhood? Mason Strong for IT Networking and Programming?
Would you like to come up and then stay up here?
Do you want to run the meeting?
Adia Rodriguez Ramos for Medical Assistance Two? Brayden Sayara for Cooperative Learning and Work-Based Learning? Sophia Angeli for Cosmetology? And Mitchell Sennings, I already said that one, for February and March. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Oh, stay here. Thank you. Thank you. Alright, section four point seven, recognition of coaches. So we. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'd like to recognize Coach Bruner. Um, he was selected as the two A Head Coach of the Year from the Illinois Wrestling Coaches Association. Um, and we slightly mentioned this at last month's meeting, but because he was not here, we invited him to come back again, um, to make sure that he could receive the recognition from the board. And his banquet has already been held, um, so we hope it was an exciting event for you. Um, but the board would like to acknowledge all of the hard work that you have done, um, for our wrestling program. We did not make your certificate. We did not.
You got a couple of pictures.
Sure, with the hurrah.
We did not make your certificate. We can take one of those to be my. Alright, section five, consent agenda items. Is there? Oh, I guess something anyway, sorry. Oh, perfect. Okay, sorry, I skipped something. Four point three, an opportunity for visitors to address the school board concerning any agenda topic. See, none. Section five, consent agenda items. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull? Alright, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I'm not a motion.
Second.
Straley?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
And Saunders? Yes. Section six, personnel consent agenda items. Is there anything that anyone would like to do? Alright, very nice. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda items?
I'll move.
Second.
Bryant?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
And Saunders? Yes. Section seven, new business, seven point one is our bus replacement bid. That's you, you're up.
Good evening, Dr. Lanning, members of the board. Uh, at the beginning of April, we, uh, put out a bid for nineteen pre-owned school buses. Um, we invited three bidders to bid. We received one bid and that day, so on the board there for one forty-seven by five million. Um, and our recommendation is to accept this bid for request transit equipment. Uh, the average lifespan of a school bus is about twelve years, and out of our fifty-two buses, more than half of them exceed twelve years of age. Uh, accepting this bid will have more than half of our buses at less than ten years of age. I had to answer any questions?
Some of those are going on twenty years, right?
We had several that were over twenty years. Twenty, we got eight twenty-year-olds and I think five twenty-one-year-old buses in that list.
Any other questions?
And these are all pre-owned, meaning they were probably leased at some point in time and came off of a lease and just economically they're very more reasonable than going out and buying nineteen new buses at this point in time, so.
Correct. So these are lease returns from, uh, another school district. They were pre-owned. They're very low mileage buses. Um, a new bus purchase is between a hundred and forty-five and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per bus. So this is saving us about a million dollars.
Do they come with any sort of warranty at all or?
We can, there's, there's no, uh, warranty on the buses themselves. The engine warranty, there, there is still a partial engine warranty on them. Um, however, we can purchase an extended warranty if we so choose to do that. Um, I, I don't see it necessary because we have two very, very capable mechanics in our garage. Um, I think that we can more than sufficiently maintain.
They've been maintaining the old ones.
Pardon me?
They've been maintaining the old ones.
The fact that we've got twenty-one-year-old buses on the road is really a miracle. They do a fantastic job. I can't say anything else.
Any other questions? Alright, can I get a motion to approve the bid, um, to purchase as presented? Murphy?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Saunders? Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Section seven point two is our technology bid for Chromebooks.
Uh, Josh Lanning, Director of Tech, again, thank you. This is just your last one. Told you I'd be back and you guys would click any back and join me. Several of the teachers did as well. Uh, up first is our bid for our Chromebooks. Uh, again, any of our bids that go on the board policy over that we get over thirty-five thousand, we put out for RFP. So we put this out. This was probably one of our biggest returns on, uh, requesting bids. I was shocked and very pleased with it. Um, our, like I stated last month, our thirty-three thousand two hundred and fifty that are grades twelve through five that go home are in the lease this, this year. So we'll have to collect all those at the end of the school year, send those ones back. So we'll have to replace our fleet for sure. Um, I put this out. I went and as you can tell, option three, I want you, it's the furthest column. Option, the three, which is a Virticom, is not the lowest. If you went off everything, but things that you, that don't show on this sheet are the, the top one that is the lowest bid and the second one are both, I believe, twenty-one, twenty-two models. Google put out some things that extended the life of these. If you got on and tried to buy, I believe, the one hundred E's for sure off the, of regular stock, you almost can't find them. So my biggest worry is on this, yes, these companies have a stock of them right now. In two years, is that stock going to be there when we're still having to get three years out of these? Because typically what we've done in the past two cycles is we've leased our Chromebooks for three years. So the third one, the Virticom, who actually, we got our last fleet from and had pretty good success and had a good partnership. That is a brand new model of the Acer. Um, similar to the ones we have now, but some improvements on them. And so that's why I went with them. I also went with the, the three-year option this last year, the last cycle, we went with three-year options, which worked out really well. If we had any hardware issues, we boxed them up, sent them back. And that was also on Virticom's shipping. Not, we don't have to pay for shipping, which I put in RFP because believe it or not, once you start shipping hundreds of Chromebooks back, that can become costly. So, uh, default warranty for three years. It also includes white gloving, which includes, um, putting our asset tags on them and rolling them, connecting to, to our Wi-Fi. And even, believe it or not, one of the biggest things that saves us time is opening them up and bulk shipping them to us as opposed to getting three thousand two hundred and fifty boxes. That takes up a ton, ton of time just to open a box, take it out, doing all those things. So that, the eight nineteen includes all, all the options, the three-year warranty, the white gloving, and the newer Chromebooks. And we will, my, my plan would, would be, we don't pay for this upfront, but we take it into our leasing company and say that we want to go with this. We can't just move forward with them until this is approved. We can sign the PO and then we can go back to our leasing company.
Have you been happy with the Acer?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I'll tell you, I've been, since I've been doing this, about every manufacturer has some glitch or, you know, it's similar by a, a car. You could go out and buy one and then be the best and then you could get the same model and the next one is, has a glitch. Um, everyone that I've gone through, it, but I, the biggest thing I will say with the Asers and Virticom is the warranty has been really good. This last batch, we had a batch of them that had a bad screen, sent them in, replaced, no, no questions asked.
But this is set up to do, to switch them out during spring or summer break?
Yep, mhm. Yep, so we'll collect them. We'll, we're working on a plan as far as collecting the last finals day. We'll send them out June, July. And these ha- have to be in an RFP, that was in the RFP, and I also confirmed it with Virticom, and we thought we were going with them, that they'll have to be here before August so that we can stage them correctly.
So, so just to underscore the notion that your recommendation is not the lowest bid, but the reason it's not is because the two lower bids have models that are not quite even, and a little bit higher.
Yes. So if you'd look, it's, it's hard to see, but the second one, the second one on there for sure says one hundred E G three, which is Gen three. Well, there's three, two or three of them that bid the one hundred E G four already. So the G three is already modeled by that. So more than likely, that's manufacturers that have those on hand and want to get rid of.
And then, so if we vote for this, then every student in our district?
Five through twelve.
Five through twelve?
Yep, mhm.
So how about, I mean, what's the policy?
They have them as well. They're, we're one-to-one K through, K through twelve. We just don't send four, four, fourth and under home.
Home?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we keep those ones. We buy those ones usually. They don't get as much wear and tear than the ones going back and forth.
Back to the home?
Yeah.
And then how about any salvage value from current?
Well, so on those ones, we will keep some, but since we did a lease with them and saved money, we did a below zero percent lease, we'll just send them back to, to them.
And it's very clear that.
Yep, mhm.
Any other questions? Alright, can I get a motion to approve the bid as presented?
So the.
Second.
Phipps?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
And Saunders?
Yes.
Seven point three. You're still here.
I'm still here. So this was, again, one of our big initiatives is replacing the old Promethean whiteboards. Um, we've, we've done really well last one. We're at, um, at our elementary's kindergarten. Uh, we, we identified foreign language at the high school and our fine arts wing. So this will replace those. We have some one-offs in like the intermediate, middle school that, like home ag, arts. Uh, this will also do our arts at, um, the elementaries. So that's, again, just keeping with the, that, that project. Our company that I've awarded this one to, and is that happy that it came with, was Two Trees with a new line. That new line's a model, or at least the brand that we've been putting everywhere else. And that was one that came in the cheapest. It came in at, uh, one thirteen, and that's for fifty boards. Also, um, listening to the teachers last year, one of the things, as we've gotten in the younger levels, that we kind of ran into with our first grade, is trying to problem solve when a teacher goes up to the board compared to when little guys go up to the board. Uh, so on this bid, I requested, they actually have new mounts now. Um, that's the eighteen specified ones that, they'll, those will go in the kindergarten wings that a teacher should be able to go to and lower it or raise it. I know that we'll probably want to look at that in the future or maybe go back and do something. But again, it, it was identifying a problem and, and trying to find a solution.
Like raise it up so it can?
More raise it up so that the, a teacher, once they go up there, they don't have to bend way down. So, or maybe not to touch it as well. Inside recess time, put it up.
Are they mounting them, Josh, or?
They mount them. So they come in, and, and on the bed, they, I, I take them for a walk around, identify all the rooms, uh, tell them the heights we want them. They come in, mount them all, and they're also in charge of, we tell them that, well, they can use our dumpsters, but they're in charge of cleanup and everything.
Make sure they work.
Yeah, and make sure they work, mhm. We hook them up to the computers. I tell them, the biggest thing, make them, they got to make sure they turn on and they touch and everything works, so.
Any other questions?
Do we go? Any prior experience with this company?
This is a company that's actually won the last two years, so. Yeah, very happy. The installers, and actually, we had an, uh, uh, one bad install on a board that had some issues, had a ball, called them up and told them, and they were here that week and repaired it. And then actually went around and double-checked them, checked them all again, so. They, they do battle, I will say, um, we go into everything from old blackboards to cinder walls to drywall, so, um, they, they do do their due diligence on making sure they're serving.
Any other questions? Alright, can I get a motion to approve this bid?
I'm still moved. Second.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Seven point door desktops.
I'm still, yep.
So this is our last one for our big project for, for the summer. Again, this goes with our five-year desktop rotation where I said we try not to let any teachers especially have any machines five years or older. So this year, this will, these seventy, we will go to the Glenwood Intermediate School who's up, our principals and APs. Uh, my recommendation, the last few years, we've, actually, since we've started the desktop rotation, we've went, Hewlett-Packard are the HPs, um, and have had very good luck with them. So again, this one wasn't, the, the lowest bid, we're up by about three thousand. Um, but the, the lowest bid was actually Bitespeed, which is a company that builds their own machines. And I'll say this, um, if you remember, one of the other things in my presentation last month was our high school audio visual lab that needs replaced as well. We had, we bid those, put those up separate for RFP because, um, those need to run the Adobe Photoshop and they don't, they need bigger specs than a regular desktop. So we put those on a separate spec sheet. Bitespeed actually won that bid as well. It actually came in under, I, it actually came in under thirty thousand for thirty machines, so it technically, we didn't even have to bid it, but I didn't know where it would come in at. I felt like that was a good time and I contacted them and said that this would be a good time for us to sample size to, to, to see what our partnership and your machines would look like. So I'm going to buy thirty machines for our audio visual lab that will be Bitespeed's that we can test, as opposed to going all in on a, on a big project. We're able to s- use them on a sample project, see if we like them, and then, and see if maybe we want to go with them next year on our big bid. So like I said, we stayed to, stayed with the HPs this year for their teachers and then, uh, we'll, we'll test the Bitespeed's out in a smaller sample.
Any questions? Alright, can I get a motion to approve?
So the. Second.
Straley?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
And Saunders?
Yes.
Seven point five.
So Josh and I will be working together on this one. So, um, keeping the board's goals in mind of long-term financial stability to address priorities and also fostering equitable opportunities to narrow the achievement gap, uh, we began that process of looking at our student fees and doing some analysis this spring to determine, um, if our, where we were, um, and if our needs were being met, uh, to keep curriculum materials at the same levels that they are, are at and have been at. Uh, since two thousand and fourteen, we have not changed our student fees. And the last time tech fees were addressed was five years ago with an adjustment from twenty-five dollars to forty dollars. Um, however, as we all know, expenses linked to providing our students with a one-to-one device and then coupling that with the, um, many different types of software platforms that we use and licenses that we, um, acquire annually to support curriculum, our costs in the technology department have continued to climb. Um, and so looking at where, uh, it was appropriate to look at fees through the work of the finance committee and looking at the hundred and sixty thousand dollar budget increase earmarked for technology, uh, from this point forward in annual budgets, um, it was a recommendation through that committee work, uh, to raise the tech fee from forty dollars to seventy-five dollars, also using local, um, Saginaw County school comparisons to make sure that we were appropriate in, um, what we were asking. Um, so therefore, it's the administration's recommendation to adjust the technology fee from forty dollars to seventy-five for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Any questions?
We had that discussion in finance and I believe that the increase still does not cover the full hundred and sixty increase to the budget, correct? So we're not passing that off dollar for dollar.
No, it does not. And also, we were very strategic and mindful of understanding that students who aren't free and reduced lunch, the district absorbs those costs for them as well. So, um, that also offsets what is coming in.
Any questions?
Not a question, just a comment. Kind of done my homework on this to make sure that the fee increase is no larger than what we actually need and that we are focused on needs and not wants. Um, but I will admit that the magnitude of the fee increase concerns we afford to families in this industry. I'll support it because I know tech is so important in the classroom, so important in our children's education, but, um, I am concerned about, um, the magnitude of the increase.
And I, I think that's important to also address that we are trying to make that balance and being very mindful of the financial burden that we're asking our families to support. Um, and so there was a lot of deliberation in the finance committee regarding that topic, um, to make sure that we're just trying to find, I'd strike that balance, um, for what we're offering students on a daily basis, um, and what we're asking families to do in support of that.
I think one thing to keep in mind is this, it hasn't been increased in so long. While technology costs have increased, um, it, 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 it looks to be a larger increase than it truly is because over time, the fee probably should have been increased even, even over the years. So, but at the same time, I can see that a family, uh, could, uh, have some strategic association with it. That is not lost.
I think you nailed it with that. Probably had, was, uh, if you want my honest opinion, we probably started, I mean, we, we tried to keep it as low as we could when we first did it. Um, I'll give you a, a good idea when I was at Rochester and this, I just, which is great, I was looking, this is my exact nine, nine years this month here. Um, prior to coming here, we rolled out one-to-one at Rochester and even then their tech fee was seventy-five.
Nine years.
Over, yeah.
No, over nine years now.
Yeah. It was already at seventy-five.
Oh, I, I understand. I just.
Yeah, yeah, you're, I, I'm, I'm just saying, that's why I think you're right. What do you do?
And I, I think that was the conversation in our finance committee meeting, is that we didn't want to constantly go back to the members of our community and say, it's five more bucks, it's five more bucks, and it's five more bucks, and it's five more bucks, as opposed to looking at it strategically and saying, yes, it's a decent increase. I think we're going to hear that from food here pretty soon too. But it was the idea that, um, we haven't done it in so long, let's make the, the right adjustments so that we're hopefully not coming back again and again and again and again, where people are going to get fatigued at that point in time. So that, that was a lot of the decision we're going to keep behind it, so.
Alright, can I get a motion to approve the new tech fee?
So the. Second.
Bryant?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Alright, seven point six is launch pricing.
Good evening, Chad Martel, Director of Food Service. Uh, just a quick background. Um, USDA has something called the Pay Lunch Equity Requirement. So when we talk about meal prices for the K through eight schools, the schools are the National School Lunch Program, they require us to have an, have in place, uh, a pricing that gets us up to pace with what they set. So every year, the USDA has a target price they come up with. So our target price this year is three dollars and seventy-nine cents. That's not going to stay that same next year. Every year we got to do the Pay Lunch Equity, every year we got to look at it. So we're always going to be, uh, working towards a moving target. Um, we have not raised prices since two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen on these, uh, on the K through eight schools for their set meal prices or their reimbursable meal prices. So this is something we made a conscious decision coming out of, um, COVID. We delayed that process a number of years. Uh, average food cost increases are, on a regular year, they were from three to five percent. Coming out of COVID, we saw meal price increases, um, anywhere from ten, fifteen, twenty percent, depending on what the item is. Those prices have stayed high. Um, we, we've put off raising the prices as long as we could for our reimbursable meals at the K through eight schools, but it's time that we do it. So we have the proposal up here, um, a small increase for elementary from two forty to two fifty, elementary from two fifty to two seventy-five, uh, middle school from two seventy-five to three. And then our breakfast prices, right now, we have a district-wide price of a dollar seventy-five, and elementary and intermediate, uh, we'll go to two, and then the middle school, two twenty-five. And just to make you aware, we do have, uh, meal requirements for the different age groups. There are different meal portions and serving sizes that we provide to the students, so that's why there's a variation of prices also based on, on grade grouping.
Any questions?
There were two real big things I remember when you came and presented the finance committee. Talked about one is we have to show that we're making progress towards getting this. We can't always say, no, 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 we're not moving prices.
Yes.
We have to show progress, correct?
We have, we have a few choices. So we have to either show pro- there's a few choices. So we either show progress to doing it. Um, the district says, hey, we'll cover any loss. Um the district says, hey, we'll cover any losses, which I know the district doesn't wanna do that because food service is supposed, supposed to be self-supported. Or we look at, um hopefully, if we have carryover, to cover that carryover. But that's not gonna be the reality of the situation. Well, our, our finances continue to get tighter every year. Um so this is gonna be one of those make or break years where we're gonna be looking at some tight numbers for food service. If we don't start um getting ahead of things, then we're gonna start getting in trouble for food service. And I, I jokingly said, well, if you guys don't raise meal prices, I'm gonna be standing here at some point saying, remember what I said, we need to raise meal prices. And just so you know, this is, this is gonna have to be a regular occurrence. Now, when I say regular, I'm not gonna say every year. But again, our target price is three seventy-nine. We can't get to three seventy-nine in one year, but we're gonna have to look at a plan where we're looking every two to three years of potentially some type of price increase. To continue us closing that gap. Um if financially we're doing fine, then maybe we can, we can put that off a year or two. Um but the reality of the situation is, the USDA requirement, it's not something that we just, you know, come up with. We do have to meet this meal price requirement.
And that goes to the second thing we talked about, which was that hopefully, we may have to do an increase this year, but not necessarily next year by going up a little bit more this year.
Yeah, that.
So again, just the fatigue part of it.
That's the hope. You know, again, the discussion we had, you know, yeah, we could start doing all these small increases every year. And it's probably gonna seem a little bit more stressful to families just knowing that that's gonna go up every year, whereas hopefully if we can do some incremental increases, we may be able to take a pause or skip here. Um if everything works out, but I always, like I said in that meeting.
Of course.
That, that, that price changes every year. And every year I have to do, use this big, long uh Excel worksheet they put out to calculate these prices. And they'll tell us where we are, where we are on pace. So the hope is that we do this price increase this year. Hopefully, um we can skip here next year and then we'll look another two to three years down there, we're potentially looking at another price increase. And as we discussed in that meeting, um if a, if a student at the middle school will say, a paid student eats every day at the middle school. Our highest participation month, our, our month with the most number of lunch days is typically September, twenty days, so you're looking at five dollars a month. So I hope that's not a burden on some families. I know it's gonna be, money's tight for everybody. Um but it's, again, it's one of those things we just can't put off.
Any other questions? All right, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Murphy?
Yes.
Fitz?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, section seven point seven is second reading of press policy meetings. Were any amendments, questions, anything? All right, hearing that, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Fitz?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saunders? Yes. Section eight, board reorganization, so just for the public's awareness and people who have not been here in April. Um every April, we reorganize the board and elect um new officers, 'cause all officers' terms are only for one year. Um so we will start that process now. Um so can I get a motion to elect Dr. Lehman as the president pro temp?
Fitz?
Second.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Straley?
Yes. Bryant?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Fitz?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
As the president pro temp, may I get a motion to nominate a president for the school board for the next year?
Nominate Tiffany Saunders.
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing that, can we get a vocal? For the motion of Tiffany as president of the board for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year? Straley?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Fitz?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
All right, can I get? Um can I get a nomination for vice president?
I'll not be able to call her on it. A second.
Are there any other nominations?
Nope, she's stuck 'cause she's not here.
All right, can you call the room? Bryant?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Fitz?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Saunders? Yes. All right, can I get a nomination for secretary?
Nominate Andrea Rediger.
I'll sign it up.
Any other nominations? Um can I give a, thank you.
Yes.
Fitz?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
All right, section.
And a big thank you for doing that.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, section eight point three is our board meeting dates for the next school year. So um in general, the board meets on the fourth Wednesday of the month, but there are three dates where we will be moving in due to um holidays. So can I get a motion to approve the board meeting dates for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five year?
So moved. Second.
Fitz?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yep.
Straley?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saunders? Yes. Section nine, nine point one, communications, our student ambassadors are here to present to us. Um I don't know if you're gonna talk about it a little bit?
Just a little bit. So um student ambassadors was a new program this year. And um so five of our student ambassadors are here to talk about their experience this year and recommendations for moving forward with this program. Um and so before you guys go into your presentation, could you just take a second and tell us who you are and what grade level you're in at the high school? For the board? Do you guys sort that out?
Eli Smith, freshman.
My name is Inabon Hallaroot and I'm a sophomore.
And then I'm gonna ask you guys to talk up, 'cause this is getting recorded, so. And the board really wants to hear what you have to say as well, okay? So they have worked on their presentation and know what they're doing, so I'm gonna let them get started. And the slides will be changed for you by Mrs. Schmier, um so she will keep track with you as we go forward.
Hi, um so we're student ambassadors. Uh student ambassadors, we are group of students who are selected to council with a relation. Allow how to improve not only our school, but the district's as well. Uh we filed an application and we're mentors and based on the grade level. Uh it will change our student fees as well as lack of enrollment and change our student fees, as well as added to the first number of participants. From there, we are now seventeen students, so it will be two first meeting students and a number of students.
Um our purpose is to basically provide feedback and information to the board and administration about our experiences at the high school. So for our collaborative process, at the very start of our first meeting, we each separately composed a list highlighting what we each saw needed the most focus to improve upon. So after this, we collaborated with the rest of the group through a fun sticky note game and created the following list. We wanted to prevent racism and hate talk, improve the connection between students and teachers, answer questions such as why is the overall school environment so negative and dreary? And why are students not given enough instruction in class? We wanted to prove, improve upon special education programs and we also wanted to gain more recognition for all students. And then we also addressed vaping and theft issues. And then after this, we discussed with administration in order to take the most strategic and effective approach. And we provided updates on the progress we were making per meeting.
Um the accom, the accomplishments we've made is um the traffic light has been fixed, um early grad prom attendance, vaping, in-school bathroom concerns, being heard. And just having an overall better school environment.
So some proposed changes. This year, we have four meetings. We've done three so far. And the fourth isn't so much to address issues as it is to just sort of wrap up the year. So while we did have accomplishments, definitely we'd like to meet way more frequently so we can form plans for how we're gonna go about things. And we also would like to keep students on the committee if they would like to continue into the next year. We feel that especially since, again, we didn't have very many meetings this year, it'd probably be good to be, have people return who have some experience and understand how we sort of operate. We would like more emphasis on peer input. When we signed up for this, it seemed that it was going to be very heavy on collecting information and questions and concerns from other students. We mainly focused on concerns addressed. I think that was in our first or second meeting, we decided on our main issues. So while that's good, throughout the year, those sort of change, we noticed that issues we saw in our first meeting were no longer relevant by our third meeting. So we would like to see more things sort of change up from meeting to meeting, just keeping up with the current issues in the school. Additionally, we like to increase some structure within the group. Um like again, our first year, just new to this, we'd like to have some sort of leadership positions. Maybe someone who keeps time, makes sure that issues don't take too much of a meeting or don't come up more than necessary. Uh vaping was a big one. It's an issue, but do we need to spend half of every meeting on it? Maybe not. So just someone to keep us on track. And again, people staying on from year to year probably have more leadership, people who are gonna attend every meeting, more leadership. That's the end.
That's it. Oh, all right, we're all these things.
And we also talked about that, like a leadership position kind of being that um uh student reminder of things too. So people were busy and we talked a little bit about um schedules and um needing more reminders as a high school student to things that are happening, so. Any questions?
I have a question. So would it be helpful for your fellow high schoolers to kind of know more about what you, who you are, what you do? So that they would understand and they can come to you to talk about some of these issues?
Yeah. Okay. I think people already kind of struggle to understand the difference between student council and class officers.
Right.
Definitely, they don't really understand with us being new, what exactly it is we do for them if we're not really being utilized as resources, I feel.
Perhaps a little marketing.
And there's some growing pains when you first start an organization. Thank you for starting.
Yes.
It's super important.
I will just echo that. This was really important to the board to be able to hear the student voice a bit more. Um we, we attempted a number of strategies, including going to some student council meetings and, and other things. But it's al, you always recognize that that's only a small portion of the students who have something to say about their experiences. So this was another attempt to get some additional voices. Um and in many ways, the charge of student council versus the student ambassador program is different. Because this is a program of the school board. This was, you know, put into place by the school board. Um and so it was really important for us that we had your input on, on the activities and, and actions of the district. And that is not to say that student council doesn't provide that as well. We always welcome student council to our meetings. Again, we've been to their meetings. Uh but this one was just serving a slightly different purpose. So I really appreciate your feedback about your experience, 'cause that will allow us to like think about this and tweak this going forward. I especially appreciate your critiques of the, of the program. That's always really important information, even though it can be. This wasn't hard to hear, but sometimes when we hear critiques, they can be hard to hear, right? Um so that was very helpful. Um so I just wanna echo other people's comments and thank you for your willingness to serve in this position. For being our guinea pigs of sorts um as we roll this out. And for, it, it sounds like your, for those of you who are not graduating, um your commitment to stay um on it for another year. Um I think you're right, that some continuity can be really important. Um and I'm a big fan of time limits on discussions. You can ask. I put time limits in all our meetings. Like, we got fifteen minutes to talk about this. So I'm a big fan of that because I do think it helps to keep um meetings moving forward, so.
Thank you all.
And I'd just like to say that I appreciate all of the ambassadors, but these five students as well. Um they've been very willing to step up. They um are not timid about emailing me or um sharing information with me. Or letting me know their concerns, which is the point of, of them coming. So I just appreciate their willingness and openness and honesty as we've had conversations so far this year, so. And then they get to say they email me, which is really exciting, so. But thank you, thank you all for, and thank you for taking your time tonight for this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, section nine point three is our future board meeting dates. On May sixth, we will um be returning to negotiations over at the high school. On May eighth, the facilities and grounds meeting will happen here. May fourteenth, the finance committee will happen here. May fifteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth, if necessary. We will continue with negotiations and then on Wednesday, May twenty-second, um at six thirty is our regularly scheduled board meeting.
For sure, we're meeting at the high school for negotiations even with the winters. Have we talked at all about moving to a place with colder winters?
I think that's probably a discussion we're having on May.
Jock's fixed, Dave.
Jock's, that is fixed.
Printing, color printing. Josh fixed it.
Oh, yay.
Josh, I was close.
She was right there.
All right, section nine point two is an opportunity for visitors to address the school board concerning any topic. C nine, section ten is adjourned. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.